Welcome all that are listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will have to provide their name and address, and then we will begin a talking to speak. Members of the public who include and wish to address the board can see the raise being moved at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public connected by phone call, please press star nine in case they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person will have on the sign up sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. These comments are public and the board cautions your visitors to not disclose confidential account information or disclose account information on accounts that is not in their names. Staff will not provide individual account information for history. They also email or call me to view what these concerns. The agenda and the presentations may be found on the website. For you using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. My name is Marlon Gonzalez, member at large, position two. President. Other members of our board include Bill Johnson, the general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, Tom Groneman, second district and currently the board secretary, Bob Mylan, first district, Jeff Bryant, third district, and Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, number three and the current board vice chair. Angela Lawson is our deputy chief counsel. I would like to remind you to put your phones on silent and please be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments that are made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in deciding our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call, please.
Roll call Gonzalez here. Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
You have a form.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of January 4th, are there any comments on the agenda?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
This is Rose, I second.
May I clarify if you're approving the agenda or the?
The agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. A roll call, please.
Roll call Gonzalez.
I.
Groneman.
I.
Haley.
I.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
I.
Bryant.
I.
That motion carries.
Now I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of December 21. If there are no corrections or additions.
So moved.
This is Jeff, I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Gonzalez.
I.
Groneman.
I.
Haley.
I.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
I.
Bryant.
I.
That motion carries.
Turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Jenny, is there anybody signed up, willing to speak? There's none here, present, Rob, is there anybody on the line with the hands raised?
Yes, sir, I have three people with their hands raised. First person is Louise Lynch.
Ms. Lynch, if you can state your name and address again for the record, please.
My name is Louise Lynch. I do have an issue with giving my address. As with the UG charter, it only states that you need your name and to require someone to give their address makes them at risk for unsafe measures by people who disagree with them. So I would really like for you to remove that requirement so that everybody who has an opinion is able to share it without feeling unsafe. A couple of weeks ago, when somebody was almost begging not to give their address, they were made to do that. And that is wrong.
If I had any consideration, would you continue, Ms. Lynch?
Yes, I live in Kansas City, Kansas. I am a YN resident. I did have an opportunity tonight to listen to your work session and I do have a few comments on that and then a couple of questions for you all in regards to budget. One of the things is Mary Gonzalez, you talked about you like to learn things and you learn everything all the time. And I just want to focus on a comment you made in that we have to have the public, we have to make the public understand our value. You can't make people understand anything. You can speak with them, you can try to teach them, but to make somebody gives the connotation of force. Communicating with your public with correct verbiage is one way to start. And so I hope that in the future, we are very careful of the verbiage that we use when we talk about your customers because all of us have value and no one wants to ever be forced to do anything. I do want to commend Tom Groneman, Jeff Bryant, and Rose Henry for bringing up the issues and really trying to brainstorm and trying to get community engagement. I really want to thank you for that. It is greatly needed. We don't want to be left out of decision making and equity as far as our utility. There's a lot of things that we in the community want and need and we are now really, really needing to have that. Mr. Haley, you talked about you wanted to suggest you didn't know what more could be done, that you thought this group was doing really well in the communication and trying to get the word out and engagement. And one thing I can suggest to you is to return the communications when your constituents ask you for help or assistance, whether it be by email, by voicemail, by text. Communication is very key. I'm still waiting for your return communication since July. And my questions that I had is in regards to the two, one of, two of the most paid employees that BPU has had that just retired at the end of December. If we can get to the public, what the amounts where they were paid out for their retirement benefits and were those included in the budget? And is there a way that we can get a copy of the itemized budget without having to go through open records?
You have one minute.
A hundred and fifty page document. Thank you.
Rob, is there anybody? You said there was three total?
Yes, sir. This is Ryan McCarron. I'm meeting you now.
Ryan, if you can state your full name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
Yes, hi, this is Ryan McCarron. I'm with Clean Air Now and I am at thirty seven thirty, Brooklyn Avenue. I was in the room a couple of weeks ago when the final budget was done. I'm sorry, I'm not there in person today. I just wanted to reemphasize what was said two weeks ago about were all of us working together. Ms. Mulvaney had suggested that, Ms. Mulvaney Henry, my apologies, would suggested that this year we can work, we can have some sort of commission that the board can reach out to the community so that we can have discussions about the next year's budget earlier so that we can see where priorities can be shifted. And I just wanted to say that we will try to be joining as much of these meetings as we can, either in person or via technology so that we can continue to offer our help and to also make sure that we see things being done. On the other hand, we also are going to pursue our demands that we work with you, maybe alongside you to, so we can see about the payment and the of tax and pursue the unified government to tell them to change things, to try to change things. So look forward to joining all these meetings this year and thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Who's next?
Next is phone number ending in nine three one zero.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, this is Ty Gorman. I address two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, six one zero four KCK, although I would also say that being forced to state your address probably should be taken off the requirements here. But the, I also got to listen to the meeting and the comments on public engagement for the last hour and, you know, heard the kind of, the ideas from Gonzalez, Milan, and Haley that BPU is doing, doing well, listening at meetings and engaging with the public with newsletters, inserts, going, going to neighborhood meetings, holding board meetings. And then there were ideas from, from other board members talking about teaching people the value of utility like they're in a classroom so they can understand like they do about cutting trees or fixing leaks, what the, what the value of the utility is. And Mr. Mylan emphasized he's fed up with people coming into board meetings and using those in ways that they shouldn't be used and, you know, they're, there were no ideas shared that supported either the last caller's memory from the, of a working group that substantively worked with the community and opened up utility planning processes. And there, Mr. Bryant said that there were more brains we have in the room, the better we are and, including industrial and commercial. He pointed out, yet none of the thoughts that were put forward in the last hour really invited more brains or participation into the room to solve problems that the community has brought forward. It was mostly focused on more opportunities to get information to the public, to teach people about the utility. I just wanted, there's, there's nothing to overcome the barriers to public participation by the most vulnerable members of our community who come forward. And Rose noted that there was plenty of special consideration given to the commercial and industrial customers already, a staff member assigned to the accounts and such. And there is nothing like that for the residential customers. I mean, that's a good place to start, no staff capacity. The board is not capable of making these, these detailed decisions and planning processes. There's, you know, the public has made what their priorities are known and brought the problems forward that, that they have expertise on, on how, what they've changed, that they want to make and that is no more shut offs that put people's lives in danger and lowering of the bills. There are a lot of solutions to those problems, but those are complicated and, and also it involves budget issues, utility planning processes. I know I've shared, personally shared with all the board members best practices for municipal utilities around the country in public engagement processes. The solutions to the problems people are dealing with aren't currently going to be solved by Mr. Mylan's solution of just listen to people rant and rave at the board meetings and then refer them to staff. There's no staff capable of fixing these issues that we're dealing with and there hasn't been any engagement to back that up. You know, other municipal utilities, as I've shared, have full facilitated stakeholder engagement processes.
You have one minute.
Within their utility planning processes, within their IRP. There's designed series of not only meetings with multiple different stakeholder groups, can be customers, can also critically should be experts in organizations and nonprofits and various other residential representatives who can have more expertise in the areas of how to help customers and bring those into the utility process and have a report. All of this should be transparent and a joint group of volunteer representatives from each of those education and outreach meetings, representing a board of diverse range of stakeholders. There's a, that can be funded, there's a separate modeling with funded with federal money, by the way, that there is federal money already available through the state and the IRA for those kinds of planning processes. A separate modeling subcommittee can be on each of these issues the customers are facing and I've brought to you already with methodology.
That's time.
Into the IRP process. So just, there's, if you have the information, please do something more.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Rob, I see four hands. Lisa, if you can state your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
My name is Lisa Walker Yeager. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's Lisa Walker Yeager. Address ten sixty eight Webster, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh four. Okay, I am thankful to be able to be here today and happy holidays to everybody. One thing I wanted to reiterate again is the community group to assist you all when making these decisions. I would like for you all to set a date in your meeting today of when we can have a community action group with the BPU that we can get together. We already have a few advocates that have attended these meetings that will be excellent for the board, that are also part of our community. So I'm asking that you set a date so we all have it. It won't be, we won't have to continue, keep asking for the same thing where we can keep, where we can move forward. So if you could please set a date or when we can start actually getting a community group together or if you want us to do it or how you want to go about doing it, I would like to hear that in the meeting today. So that was something that I am requesting that we move forward on that and we could set a date. And thank you for those who are trying to work for us and not against us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob, I'll only see four, you said you had more.
One minus one, Susan Stevens, is meeting right now.
You can state your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Yes, I'm Susan Stevens, forty eighteen Silver Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh six. I was at your last meeting and got to, was very excited to get to chat with Rose Mulvaney Henry as some others are, very excited about her and others board members' ideas for the community engagement group. So just wanted to let her know I'm still here. I'm still, like I said, I'm committed to attending all the meetings whenever possible. I, I got sick, so I didn't want to expose you all to whatever I'm fighting off. So that's why I'm attending virtually tonight, but just wanted to let, you know, I'm still here, excited about the community engagement and I second Lisa Walker's request to, that's my friend Lisa Walker, her request to, to, for, to, to set a time for the, it can, that we can all do that and, and thank you and have happy new year to everyone.
Thank you. And Rob, is that just everyone? All right, thank you for those that called in to participate tonight. Next on the agenda, I'll have Lori come up, present our November twenty twenty two financials.
Evening. Okay. Get started with November twenty twenty two, looking at our electric bill usage year to date. Overall, we're up about five and a half percent in comparison to twenty twenty one levels. Residential is pretty much in line with where we were in twenty twenty one. Commercial is up slightly, four percent. And then our industrial has continued to improve from pandemic levels. It's up fifteen percent. Looking at water. Looking at the water usage, we're up about three and a half percent over twenty twenty one levels. We do see residential down in comparison to twenty twenty one by a little bit less than one percent. Commercial is up about six percent and then our industrial usage is, is up about eight percent. Looking at revenues just for the month of November. Overall, in comparison to twenty twenty one, we're up ten and a half percent. Electric is up over twenty one levels by about two point one million, while water is up about a hundred and seventy thousand. Looking at budget to actual for November, overall, we're down about three percent, which represents about seven hundred and sixty five thousand, down seven hundred and eighty three thousand. That is in the electric side. Water is up slightly by about eighteen percent. Overall, the impact for the month of November, ERC is a big part of, of that in comparison to budget. So our electric is down about four percent while water was up about one percent. Looking at revenues from a year to date perspective, we're up ten point six percent over twenty twenty one. Electric is up about, from a budget to actual, we're up about twelve point one percent on combined basis. Electric is up about fourteen percent while water is up about two percent. That twelve point one percent represents about thirty six point eight million above our budget of three hundred four point two. Some of the areas, variances from the actual to budget, residential is up about three point one million. Commercial is about fifteen million. Our industrial is up about five million. Schools were up slightly, about seven hundred and fifty thousand, while our wholesale market sales are up about ten million. On the water side, residential is up about four hundred and twenty thousand, while commercials up six hundred thousand. Industrials up slightly, about eighty thousand, while our wholesale is up about a hundred and twenty five. Looking at our operating expenses for the month of November in comparison to twenty twenty one, we're up about thirty eight percent over twenty one levels with the over twenty one on the electric side, that represents about six point eight million above twenty one levels and the water is up about four hundred thousand. Looking at budget to actual, we're up almost thirty thousand, I'm sorry, thirty percent. Electric is up about thirty four percent while water is down about six percent. So that thirty percent above budget represents about six million. On our operating expenses, from a year to date perspective, we're up eighteen percent over twenty twenty one levels. From a budget to actual, we're up about sixteen percent with electric being up twenty percent while water is down about five percent. One thing to note that is a constant seems on this year is our, if you look at the chart, our fuel and purchase power, fifty one percent of our expenses has been fuel and purchase power. All of our other areas, production has been down about two hundred and seventy thousand, while TND is down about four million and our GNA is down about three point seven million in comparison to budget. This slide is looking at our expenses, less depreciation. We're about twenty one percent over twenty twenty one levels. From a budget to actual perspective, we're up about nineteen percent. Some of the areas of variances there on the electric side, so our purchase power is up about twenty point seven million. Our fuel is about twenty one million above. Production is up slightly, about five hundred and ninety thousand. So our TND is down four point two million as well as our GNA is down about three million. On the water side, production being down almost nine hundred thousand, TND is down about seventy thousand and our GNA is down about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Our change in net position just for the month of November, we're at a negative five point four million. We projected to be about eight hundred and forty seven thousand to the positive. Electric is down about six point three million compared to three hundred and seventy five thousand on the budget and water is up about eight hundred and forty thousand compared to about four hundred and seventy three thousand on the budget. From a year to date perspective, our year to date, positive change in that assets is twenty five point six million on a combined basis, fifteen point nine of that on the electric side and nine point seven positive on the water side that's compared to a budget of about twenty seven point five million. This is slide, this is our tenure history. Tenure look at our revenues in the blue bar and our expenses on the red. This is strictly looking at year to date through November on the electric side. Next slide looks at our water from a year to date perspective. Blue being the revenue and, and red being the operating, non operating expenses. This next slide is looking at our average daily collections. Historically, looking at twenty twenty one and twenty two for the month of November, our average daily collection is about one point eight million. That is coming down from where we were, have been in the August, September, October time period. So October was our last of our billing of summer revenue rates. So November is our first of the winter rate. So this represents November cash is looking at our September usage that we build in October. This slide is our monthly cash comparison. So for the month of November, we had a reduction of cash of about eight hundred four thousand. Year to date, we're at, still at a positive one point, almost one point one million, one little bit less than one point one million. Looking at our cash position. We're at sixty three days of cash on hand. That's down from sixty eight days where we were last month. So we did have, looking at rolling average of our expenses in comparison to twenty twenty one. You know, we're averaging about forty million higher than in twenty twenty one and most of that's due to fuel and purchase power expenses, so. We did receive in December, which is not represented in, in this number yet, about two million dollars from a KDHE reimbursement of some of our water projects that we represented next month. This graph is just our historical, looking at our days cash on hand for the last three years. And then this graph looks at, in that comparison, so the red line equals our days of cash on hand and our blue represents our change in cash outside of our February twenty one event. Most of that kind of flows with how the ups and downs of the cash change in our cash levels. Some of our balance sheet notables, our fuel, we're about seven, almost seven point five million fuel inventory on hand. Our last report showed us with about forty two days of coal on hand. We still are hanging on to our bond dollars. We have a twenty sixteen issue, about seven hundred and fifteen thousand and our twenty twenty of eight hundred thousand. And those are both projected to be spent in twenty twenty three. Let's see, fill our transformer order. On our capital spending, our current spending has been about thirty two million. Our current spending has been about 32 million of our $56 million budget. There's 43% remaining. Some of the major projects there, the Piper overhead feeders, about 930,000. And the work for Fisher Underground Feeders, about 3.3 million. Annual underground and annual overhead projects. Throughout the community are 2.7 million and 1.5. And then we spent about 1.5 on our water leaks and valves and system improvements. And then about 2 million in our transmission improvements. And then the work we do alongside with the UG for water distribution is about 500,000. Last slide looks at our debt coverage with pilot, there is current about 2.3 times. Electric being 2.21 and our water at 1.97. Down below, that is our coverage without pilot, so we're at a combined rate of 1.65. 1.52 on the electric side and 1.51 on the water side. I will note that we've changed ERC for. Beginning January 1 for our first quarter. It basically went up 1/10 of a percent, so it was 4.599. And we went up to 4.699, so that averages out to about, on an average residential bill, which is about 850 KWH. About 84 cents a month difference. That, I'll ask if you have any questions?
This is Jeff, I moved to approve the November financials as presented.
Second.
This is Rose, I second.
Then moving second to approve the November financials, roll call. Roll call, Gonzalez.
I.
Brenneman.
I.
Haley.
I.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
I.
Bryant.
I.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
I would say something, Lori. That even though. Revenue isn't looking as promising, I. I am happy to see that our debt coverage is at least staying up where we need to be, so. I know it's trying, but thank you guys for all your hard work and sacrifices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next on the agenda, I'll ask. Thank Maurice and Andrew is going to tag team. Some of the operational things that's going on in the regional market, I know you guys have heard about fuel prices, you've heard about. Number of other things that are taking place, we're in a winter period, there's been some. Late breaking things over the last few days, few weeks, or what's going on across the, across the country? So I thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring the board up speed on some of that activity, so.
Maurice. You're kind of taking my intro there, but I'll go ahead and start.
And tell me what yours were.
As Bill said, there's been a lot of, especially over Christmas, winter extreme weather we're having, seems like it's happening on the. Routine basis, and so that's something that we wanted to kind of give you overview of what preparation from a national level. But also from a regional level is being taken in order to basically lessen the impact of those extreme events. Like always, I like to give like an overview of what I'm going to talk about. First off, about the purpose, why I'm up here today or why we are up here today discussing this. Under a nationwide outlook, it's kind of going to be a nationwide, what's happening, what was the forecast, what they're looking at? A regional outlook, it's going to be more centered towards that Midwest, include Southwest Power Pool, and we'll talk about that. And some other entities in our Midwest. We're going to talk about Winter Storm Elliott, that's the new name storm this past Christmas. I think that's the new thing to have a name for every storm that comes about, but it's Elliott, so that's the new storm, Winter Storm Elliott. And then Andrew is going to talk about Southwest Power Pool, and then we'll leave hopefully a little bit of type of questions. Next slide. So the purpose of this presentation is assist the board to make an informed decision. We're up here having these conversations, helps you to have an informed decision of what we're doing and why we're doing it, right? But also to inform the public what we're doing for these extreme and weather events. And what the national, what's the national forecast and what's the national temperature? And what kind of steps they're taking in order to make sure we stay reliable and make sure we have enough resources to provide the power? Next. So I know you're familiar with NERC, North America Electric Reliability Corporation, we talk about it all the time. We usually talk about it from a cybersecurity standpoint, that audit standpoint. But they also have other jobs, other duties, responsibilities that they do. One is operation and reliability of the grid, they're responsible for that, so they put out standards similar to the EPA, kind of like cops. You have to operate the grid in this type of matter. And so it makes you follow these rules, and one of the things they also do is look at the forecast, the plan. They look at the weather and say, hey, we're going to put out an outlook for this winter, and that's what they do. They look at the winter and say, based on what we're seeing, and they look at the generation resources. They look at coal, they look at fuel, they look at ongoing tensions in the Middle East, they look at availability of global affairs. They look at the transmission system, that's that power that those big lines to get the power actually to the city. They look at operating reserves, those are the reserves additionally above what we need to serve the city. And then they look at winter peak demands, how's everything changing? Everything's changing, right? How are we changing with EVs? How are we changing removing more towards electric? So they look at that and then make an assessment for this coming winter. They do one for the summer as well, so they look at that and that informs us, but also informs Southwest Power Pool and other entities. What they need to prepare for if they need to making changes. They do, not yet, they do a longer term one. It's a little bit further outlooks, 10 years, 15 years, and say, this is what the industry is trending to. And so they take a look at that as well, so there's constant studies going, and it's one of those things that keep us alert. And so this is just a snapshot of the national one, and as you can see, it's. I just basically taken. Taken the snapshot and kind of, there's a little bit areas I won't talk about, and it's interesting, I wasn't planning on this to occur. After December, but it has occurred, and if you look at some of the areas that are highlighted, it's some of the areas that were. Had some outages during the last storm, right, that winter storm. But this is prior to that, so you can almost say they were kind of predicting the future. So these are pretty reliable to look at and say, we're going to have an issue here. If you look around, then we'll pick some, it would take my so that negative 7.6%. That's basically saying about generation they have to support that footprint. They're down, they, they're missing 0.7, 7.6%. They need to have generation or availability generation to meet that reserve. That needs to be, the reserves usually are between 12 to 15% above that, what you need to serve your customers. And so that's what they're saying there, and some of those reasoning is traditional power plant closures. Power plants are closing, we're closing power plants, we're replacing it with. Other plants that necessarily don't provide that same factor, right? Does not provide that same factor where you can have it when you need it, when you want it. And so that is causing the extreme weather to have an impact. Another one is the convergence of fuel supply, domestic and global relations are happening. Gas, coal, a lot of that getting the coal transportation, a lot of that's having an impact across the, across the nation. And we're filling in, you can tell if you just go around and read some of those outages and seen that the man also increased during that time. So our demand is increasing, Andrew is going to talk about SPP, and they're going to talk about our demand set a peak. And we're seeing that across PJM, across some of the entities up north, we're seeing it set peaks. Why our capacity is going down, our generation capacity, that's a factor you did not want happening. And so it's occurring right now, and so they are aware of that. And that's some stuff they're looking at. Next slide. And so on the regional level, and we're going to move towards Midwest reliability organization, we've talked about this before. It's called MRO for short, they're basically. They apply or basically police the actual standards for this region, and that's that Midwest region that we're just talking about. And so. They do a more kind of granular look of the Midwest region. Same type of look, but use a little bit more data, so want some of the data they use is historical performance data. They look at generators, historical data and say, this generator was on and it performed, right? They look at the historical data, they look at generation resource data, they look at the fuel. Across the Midwest and say, this is what the winter looks like for extreme events, and we'll be able to keep the light tone. And so you put out the same type of. Study that allows Southwest Power Pool and BPU to be able to make decisions and say, hey. It looks like we're going to have a hard winter or we're long, and it looks like we're going to be okay. Next slide. And so that's the footprint you see here, MRO is right there in the red in the middle, goes all the way up to Canada. And you'll see includes Kansas, Nebraska, and Porsches, Oklahoma, Texas, Arkansas, and Missouri. And it includes the RTOs, and we're talking about RTO, right, Southwest Power Pool is RTO. It balanced continuously the load and the generation, you have to have that continuous balance. And that's what Southwest Power Pool provides to us, and that's what my cell Midwest Independent System Operator, they provide that continuous balance. They tell BPU, hey, we need your generator to turn on because we need it on right now. It said, hey, the load is dropping, BPU, we need your generator to basically to go offline. And so it constantly looks at that constantly and make sure we're keeping the lights on here in Kansas City and other places. Next. And so as you recall, I made the comment about winter storms, Winter Storm Yuri, not too long ago, feels like it was yesterday, you count COVID and everything else. Skip a year, here, here we are, right? And so Winter Storm Yuri, there was a number of changes Southwest Power Pool, that grid operator. Made during that time, as you recall, we had some low shedding events during that time, we had to. Basically shed load on purpose, when I say shed load, meaning saying, we're going to basically turn these people in the dark in order to. Keep the grid and the system up, right? And so it kind of did that across that footprint and make sure we were able to keep the grid up. And so they did that, and then they went back and did a basically a root cause analysis, and a root cause analysis is basically. I'm trying to give an example real quick, is a limb hit the line and causes outage, right? Instead of saying, hey, the limb hit the line, a root cause is saying, hey, you know what? The limb hit the lines because we have a poor vegetation management program. That's going a little bit deeper, and that's what Southwest Power Pool did, and said, what was the actual cause? Why we were short and allow this extreme weather event to occur, that cold weather event to occur, and have the impact in which it did. So they made a couple of changes. And actually 22 action items altogether, they approved a fuel assurance. Basically requiring called power plants, say you need this much coal on site. Hey, you need to look at this regarding gas, in order to count that resource, you need the natural gas ready and available. Some other changes is resource planning, they looked at planning for these extreme events. That really has never happened, they always plan for the peak demand. Planning for the extreme event is a different type of planning, and so they implement that type of planning. Can we plan for these extreme weather winter events that are occurring? Availability, emergency, communication, communication wasn't really there with SVP. They were kind of struggling with, hey, we're having low shed events. The utility were kind trying to get communication, what does this mean, how long are we out? They struggled with the communication, they went back and tried to rebound the communication. They're currently pushing out stuff constantly during these events, informing the public, informing the utility, so we can inform our customers as well. And so they made these changes across the footprint, these changes were identified, you look at MRO Regional Assessment Finding. And that footprint we're looking at, Southwest Power Pool was not on there. For reason being, some of the changes they made, and I just talked about. Coal transport is still an emergency, emerging risk, they still see that in Southwest Power Pool. But as far as sufficient resources, reserves to meet those requirements during those extreme weather events. They're long, they've made those changes to, to address those issues. However, during the extreme weather events, what they're still having is, is still really hard to make sure that excess capacity is enough. And so they're still having some issues, but they're not high risk issues, they're more like medium risk issues. And so at the, this past extreme weather event Elliott, as you can tell, we didn't have the same issues as they did on the east. We didn't have the same issues as some other utilities had, is because Southwest Power Pool and BPU has made those changes and start. Implementing those type of winterization type changes. Next slide.
So just for those, myself and those in attendance, clarification. So when you say the load shedding, you're basically talking about either a rolling brownouts or in some cases even blackouts. That are being implemented to protect the majority of the system by sacrificing a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Of the other areas.
Yes, sir. Okay, totally. Thank you. Thank you. And so I highlighted areas during Winter Storm Elliott here, there was estimated 1.7 million people across the US that lost power during the event. And that was Christmas weekend, so that, it feels a little bit different, if you know what I mean. TVA at one time lost 6,000 megawatts of generation, that is 6,000 megawatts of generations, basically probably. Seven to nine power plants being out, and Glenn, you can help me if that's not correct. It's somewhere probably in there for TVA footprint, that's probably probably a little bit less, but. TVA and Duke Energy used rolling blackouts during that time, and that's what we're just talking about. They had to institute rolling blackouts to keep the grid up, TVA had them and Duke, and you're not familiar with Duke, Duke is that South Carolina, North Carolina area? That's Duke Energy over there in the area, and they had Institute rolling blackouts during that time. PJM Interconnection, which is similar to Southwest Power Pool, it's not a utility provider, but operates the grid, just like SPP. It's the largest RTO in the world, it's huge. As you see, it provides 65 million people in 13 eastern states. They had, they basically wasn't expecting so many power plants to be out, I believe I have a number here, real quick of the. They had at one point in time, 25% of its generation capacity was offline. And they were not expecting that, that was nearly 45,000 megawatts, they were trying to get backup due to cold weather impacts, fuel supply and stuff like that. And so ERCOT and PJM are kind of in the same, if you look at the line and where it was trending. There's basically a graph, you could see the day ahead, right, that they had, it's like, we're going to be here just across, like, let's say, we need 45,000 megawatts to meet. The load and provide the lights in our, the electric in our area. Below, the, it was here, but then the real time was about, I say, 10 to 12% higher than what was expected. And so that's something we have to get better at. From a actual entity standpoint, from SPP and PJM. Forecasting that has to be better, I mean, to come in and your reserves are only 12 to 15% of that. You're losing your reserves before you even start hitting, and so that was one of the things PJM and ERCOT barely, ERCOT barely escaped, PJM did not. That it was at that point where, okay, we're barely going to keep the lights on, so they're still struggling to some of those problems that they had during Yuri. They haven't really solved that issue yet, and so I imagine there would be some. New standards and requirements that come out of this.
So, so as far as renewables go, and I don't know whether you'll know the answer to this, so like in a situation where there is. Extreme snow. Does that, I'm guessing in my mind, I'm picturing that's going to interrupt solar because it's going to cover the panels. And make it, you know, besides the fact that it's cloudy, but you still get some. And then the wind, like when we were seeing those 50, 60 mile an hour winds, they can't really operate the wind during that extreme of, correct?
I believe they can, the wind was blowing during that time, and now. Well, it's.
I just didn't know whether they can regulate that heavy of winds and whether it damaged the equipment.
So yes, when, when wind speeds pick up to a high enough level, they do have to back those wind turbines back down because they, they can't regulate at that level. But a lot of the time during this winter storm Elliott, the wind was online and operating. One of the biggest challenges with wind during this winter storm is that it struggled to get moved to where it needed to be. And so there was a lot of congestion at those nodes, but it was online, it was contributing, helping the system overall. But it does struggle a lot of times in some of these extreme weather conditions, whether the turbines freeze, whether they shut them down for, for wind issues, but yeah. the turbines freeze, whether they shut them down for, for wind issues, but yeah.
And so um, I just want to go ahead and real quick on FERC announced December twenty-eighth. It will cut the joint investigation, did the same type of joint investigation for Yuri. Open investigations and what can we do to improve the system during these extreme weather events? So they have already done that. They're on top of it. They're going to be looking into that coming soon. Um, the chair, the actual former chair now, uh, Richard Glick. He makes a comment and it's that bulk, that bulk behavior of the bulk power system during storms show that the bulk power system is critical to public safety and health. And we're keep seeing that from the standpoint of these extreme events, but these cold weather events having an impact on life. And we, we see it happening. It happens all the time. And we could see the news, it's past a cold weather event that had the impact on life. And NERC CEO Jim Robb has scored the frequency of these extreme events and we keep talking about them. And this is not even talking about summer. We're, we're seeing it during the summer as well, where you're we're expected to see it in the summer. If you historically look, that was when you see high load, right? You see high load, everyone has their ACO and you have outages that way. These are different. These extreme weather events are occurring. And how can we predict them? And then number two, how can we become more reliant, uh, reliability increase, but also our resiliency? To be able to bounce back quick enough to protect the grid, if that makes sense. Um, I believe that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Maurice. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Southwest Power Pool. Um, one of the comments you guys made in the, the previous session is, is really hoping that the board meeting can get down to the community at a better level. Uh, and I know I struggle with this sometimes. And so I'm hoping, hoping to do better on this little piece here. Because one of the things I want to talk about is who is SPP? What do they do for us, for the community, uh, for the, the region at, at large? And, and so SPP is really a nonprofit corporation. It's one of nine regional grids operators within the United States. It has a hundred and four member utilities. Uh, just like us and Evergy and Independence and all of us belong to uh, Southwest Power Pool. They don't own any generation. They don't have any load. They're really the air traffic controller for the grid system in this region. So they operate from northern Texas up to the Canadian border, really in the central part of the United States. And that's what their responsibility is, is to balance the supply and demand of the transmission system and make sure the power goes where it needs to go. It's our generation doesn't necessarily just serve BPU. It serves the greater grid, just like Evergy serves the greater grid. That's what we're here for is to serve the greater grid and, and they help do that and facilitate that. Next slide, please. And so really from an SPP's perspective, SPP has the authority and responsibility. So SPP has balancing authority, has a responsibility and clear decision-making authority to take whatever actions are determined necessary to ensure the reliability of its balancing authority area. So that fourteen state region from northern Texas to the Canadian border. This includes taking specific action to alleviate emergencies that may jeopardize the entire grid. Uh, kind of like Jeff asked. And, and so they have the ability to bring generation online. They have the, the ability to curtail load, if that's what they need to do, to protect the greater grid. And that's what their job is. Next slide, please. So here's a, a risk period scenario for SPP. And I, I could put one of these up here for we, we talked about MISO a little bit. We talked about ERCOT a little bit. This is the one for SPP. And so between the member entities like BPU, SPP itself, as well as NERC collectively work through planning processes after planning process, long-term, short-term, seasonality, all of these things to devise these, these structures of, of what the system looks like and is expected to look like. And now as, as Maurice mentioned, we're getting more and more into emergency level events. What do those look like versus just normal peak winter events? And so we're changing some of the structures and some of the ways we look at some of these events. Uh, the, the, the planning has never been more robust than it is today. And it's only going to get more robust as we continue to get more people driving into it. But from an SPP perspective, we have seventy point eight gigawatts of generation capacity in SPP today. And so through some of the risk period scenarios, you may look at, hey, typical maintenance outages may account for four point eight gigawatts. Uh, forced outages may account for five point eight gigawatts. Uh, D rates may be ten point two gigawatts. All these risk factors that go into a decreasing the amount of generation that you actually have available at the time that it's needed. Because of system issues, cold weather issues, hot weather issues, maintenance issues, whatever it may be, fuel issues. All of those things are issues that arise during these emergency events. And then we look at also the load side. So the load side is what do we have to cover during these periods? And so the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three's winter net internal demand. That is what us as utilities believe that our internal demand will be for our peak within the SPP region. So collectively, all of us contribute to that number. And we believed it to be about forty-one point six gigawatts. SPP, together with NERC, they stress that number, like you would do anything to take it and, and stress that number to say, hey, what would happen if the conditions are more stressed than it, you would typically expect to see? And so they stress that number to forty-four point one gigawatts. And just for reference, forty-four point one gigawatts is higher than SPP has ever seen in any winter period in its history. Okay, so they did stress it. Uh, the, the highest previously before this was forty-three point six gigawatts, which occurred during winter storm Yuri, happened to be. Um, so we come into winter storm Elliot, for example. Oh, one of the things I want to point out before I get to that is, one of the factors as you look here is even at a stress level of forty-four point one gigawatts, even after all the risk period scenarios that you see over there on the left, is that load is still relatively well below all those risk period scenarios. And that is why on Maurice's slide earlier, NERC came back and said, hey, SPP actually looks like it's in pretty good shape because the load versus all the risk scenarios looks like it sits pretty well. If I was to show MISO or ERCOT or one of those other RTOs, uh, that, that load slide would be much, much higher across those spectrum. And so you'd have much fewer risk scenarios that you could go through before you had to start curtailing load. And so SPP for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three winter season is in a better position than many of those other RTOs. And at least through winter storm Elliot, uh, has, has proven that fact compared to some of the other regions. And so we did not get to a point where we asked the public to reduce load. We did not get to the point where we curtailed load. None of that happened. Um, we did stress the system. I'm not saying that the system didn't stress at all. But that's part of the process as we go through these events to, to stress the system and see, see where you're at and see what vulnerabilities you do have. Um, so as I talked about winter event Elliot, uh, one of the interesting things is on twelve twenty-two, winter storm Elliot actually increased load to just over forty-seven gigawatts. So well higher than we've seen in SPP in the history of time. And even higher than we've seen on the extreme winter peak demand that NERC and SPP collectively come, came back with. So that's an interesting uh, nugget to say it was even higher than, seven percent higher than the extreme weather condition that was forecasted by those two agencies. From a BPU perspective, we actually came back with four oh one megawatts. That's our highest winter peak of all time. So the highest winter peak, uh, highest December peak in history was two thousand and five. We got three eighty-five. The highest ever all winter peak was two thousand and ten. We were at three ninety-six. Last year we were at three sixty-two. And so we're well above, from a peak perspective, this is from a peak perspective, from where we seen last year and even historically where we've seen on the winter side. So we have seen some of that peak demand, especially in, in really cold weathers, bring that up. And so I, that's interesting. And, and we really mirrored really closely with what SPP was seeing as a whole. Even though we make up slightly less than one percent of what SPP is, our load mirrored really closely with what they seen collectively as a pool. So, next slide, please. So this is really what SPP deems as their grid conditions. And, and one of the reasons I want to go over this, because I really think the public is going to start getting more and more information as to who is SPP? What do they do? Because they're going to start seeing SPP more because from the grid conditions changing, our resource mix changing, SPP is the balancing authority. That they're more communicative now than ever in terms of as we go through these emergency events, they will communicate directly with the public as well as with us memberent entities. And so I want to make sure that the public, because the first time the public I remember ever heard of SPP was during winter storm Yuri. And they're like, well, who told us to shut off the power? Who's this SPP that shut off my power? And so now it, I want it to be that they start knowing who it is, how the whole system operates. And this will help kind of bring that into context a little bit about what they do and that it's not just BPU or Evergy or Independence or us utilities. We're collectively all working together to manage that grid system. And so this is, this is the met, matrix of, of how they go through their grid conditions. And the vast majority of all hours are sitting in that far left position of normal operations. And so rarely do we move to the right, but when we do move to the right, um, we, we move through those various channels and each of those channels have different attributes and different requirements, what SPP and what, what us as member entities are required to do as we move through that process. Next slide, please. So initially we, we would move just to the right to the weather advisory. So this is just SPP coming out and saying, hey, we expect extreme weather conditions to occur over the next few days, next few weeks, those type of things to say, hey, just be aware, extreme weather is coming in, it will likely impact load condition, potentially impact wind conditions potentially impact generator conditions. And so therefore just be aware of what that is. There to the right again is, is the resource advisory. So that just means severe weather conditions may impact the outage of the unit. It may impact uh, wind forecast uncertainty, balance load within the footprint, those type of things. And, and so it's just another step on the chain that is communicating really with the utilities in the system, the load serving, the generator systems and the utility of what we need to do to make sure that we're prepared for these events. And so they, they try to be more and more communicative than they've ever been to ensure that reliability is, is top of mind. Next slide, please. And so as we move into conservative operations, conservative operations really mean that we're no longer operating under normal operation. So up until that point, we're really operating under normal operations. Conservative operation says, hey, we are not going to try to keep the exact same amount of bandwidth on the sideline that we do typically. We're going to prepare for more. And therefore we're going to turn on long lead resources. So those resources that take twelve hours or twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours to come on, we're going to start turning those on now. Just in case it, it continues to worsen and therefore they're online and, and ready to participate versus, hey, we need it now. Well, it's too late. You're, you're forty-eight hours too late for that. They also start reaching out to us as utilities to say, hey, prepare your generators for future activity because it is likely that we're going to call on all resources in the footprint as we move forward. So be prepared for that activity. They also will reach out and say, hey, can you postpone any scheduled outages? Are there any outages you can come off early? Those type of things to say, hey, I want all hands on deck or as much generation as I can have available, available. Next slide, please. And then as we move into the EEA one event or Energy Emergency Alert Level One, uh, this is declared when all available resources have been committed. So everything that is available to run from a generation perspective is online and running. And so this says, hey, SPP is at risk of not meeting its operating reserves. Essentially, I don't have that much on the side that can come back on if I need to move further up. And so this is all resources that are available to SPP is operating. And at this point, they'll start reaching out to those behind the meter generators. So behind the meter generators are those generators that SPP doesn't talk directly with. Those are generally sub-ten megawatt generators. So generally smaller communities, uh, two megawatt generators, three megawatt generators, those type of things that generally don't communicate directly with SPP and therefore SPP doesn't dictate them to run, not run, those type of things. Uh, small towns generally operate those kind of on a standalone basis without SPP. But at this point, when they're in the EEA one event, SPP will reach out to all of those members that have that behind the meter generation and say, please plan to run that generation. Um, and so that's what they do at that level. Next slide, please. And so as we move into an EEA two event, the first step of an EEA two event is an appeal for conservation. So SPP goes directly to the public. They also go directly to member entities like ourselves and Evergy and Independence to say, can you reach out to your member constituents and ask for conservatorship, uh, conservation? And so those are important steps to say, hey, can you as either industrials or residential, can you turn your thermostat back two degrees? Those type of things. What can you do to help alleviate the concern on the load side to lessen that burden? So that's a step one of an EEA two event. Uh, next slide, please. And so then the next step on an EEA two event is declaring the system energy deficient. And what that means is they will go in and make sure all behind the meter generation is turned on. They will look at all interruptible load, that is load that is not firm load that has been available to make cut without being curtailed. And then it, it's asking all of those entities to do what they can. So all generation now is online, all behind the meter generation is online. And all non-firm load has been curtailed. Next slide, please. And then in the EEA three event is when SPP work with a reserve sharing group. So this is all the RTOs across the country. All of those work together cooperative to try to make sure that all the power that can be brought across from MISO or ERCOT or PJM is coming across as much as it can, right? So when we looked at weather event Yuri, that was a, it was a big area, just like Elliot was a pretty big area as well. And so it's hard for ERCOT to send power up to SPP because they're having their own struggles and same with MISO and so forth. But this is an area where generally when it's localized, you can move power more freely between MISO and SPP or ERCOT and SPP because not all areas of the country are getting hit exactly in the same way. And so that's one of the things that the reserve sharing group does. Um, and then they also ensure that all non-firm load is shed, all behind the meter generation is on and those type of activities. Next event, next slide, please. And then the last step of a EEA three event is to direct controlled service interruptions. And this is what occurred during winter event Yuri. And so during winter event Yuri, there were two, on two occasions that they went to an uh, EEA three event and, and load was curtailed across SPP. Uh, at one point, it curtailed one point five percent of total load in SPP. On the next occurrence, it curtailed six point five percent of total load in uh, SPP. Those were both pretty short durations, but those occurred. And, and that's the only time in SPP history that that has occurred and it did not occur in winter, but then Elliot. Um, and so during winter event Elliot, we never got past an EEA level one. Um, but again, that, that shows that it did stress, but not to the level of, of getting to an EEA three where, where we would see those curtailments. Next slide, please. So here's really the steps of what we've seen in winter event, event Elliot is on twelve nineteen, SPP did issue a cold weather advisory for the dates of twelve twenty-one to twelve twenty-six. The next day on the twentieth, they issued a resource alert uh, for the period of twelve twenty-two to twelve twenty-five. And then on twelve twenty-three is really when, when activity uh, started occurring is it issued conservative operations on the morning of twelve twenty-three. Later in that morning, it issued an EEA level one event. It around midday, it returned to conservative operations. Later in the afternoon, it went to an EEA level event again. Then later that evening, it returned to conservative operations. And then on twelve twenty-five, it resumed normal operations. And those steps where it, where it goes to, we'll say an EEA level event, back to conservative operations, back to an EEA level event. That is pretty typical in the winter time because there's really generally two peaks to a winter day. Early morning, when people are going to work, they're starting the machines up, all that stuff. It peaks up. And then late afternoon, when people are coming home, cooking, all those things that they do with the towards that period of the day, it peaks again. And so winter generally has a double peak where summer doesn't have that, that double peak process. And so winter kind of has its own unique challenges. And that's really why you seen that EEA level event pop up, pop up twice on that, the twenty-third. And that's really why you seen that EEA level event pop up, pop up twice on that, the 23rd. And on that note, I'll, I'll take any questions and, and Maurice is here as well. So.
I guess the only, Andrew, the only thing that I, so when we talked about the shedding the load during Yuri and twice the 1.5%, 6.5%. None of that really happened generally around here, right?
It, it did happen here. It happened at all member utilities in SPP. So SPP dictated how much had to be cut and each organization had to curtail that amount of energy. So, so we did rolling brownouts for short periods of time. Uh, and the same happened in Evergy's territory and Independence as well. And so nobody, they don't put anybody immune to that. They collectively do it. And we, we work cooperatively to, to make that happen. Uh, and so it, it's not dictated by, well, I have this much generation on and you don't have, it's a cooperative pool. And so yes, it did occur here and it occurred all throughout SPP's region.
So, so basically just for clarification, the BPU doesn't determine when we're going to do that. That's where, where it's dictated to us as, as responsible members to help keep the system reliable.
That is exactly the case. And that's, that's kind of what I want to make sure everybody understands who SPP is and, and what their role is. And that we're all members of that organization to make sure that the grid works efficiently and effectively and provides the best reliability that can versus each of us. Previously to 2014, we were our own balancing authority and Evergy was their own balancing authority. And you had your own responsibilities. But since that time, you know, they, they've decided that it's much better to collectively work the system than everybody individually trying to work their own small mini grid. And so that is, that is really the case. And I think we're going to continue to see that expand probably with more cooperative agreements between, you know, SPP and MISO. And, and if you looked at some of the grids is from Kansas West, it's blank. That, that Western interconnect is really kind of strange. There's only, you know, a handful of ties between those two. And there, there's not much power that gets moved back and forth. So that's one of the things that SPP today is working on is making a Western market that hopefully that helps expand that footprint and then, you know, brings in more resources and allows the power to flow more freely between Kansas and Colorado and so forth. Because, you know, like anything is Kansas, we have a lot of wind and, and that's great. But the, the more places it has to go, the better it is for everybody versus curtailing that wind because it doesn't have an ability to, to leave or the ability to get generation from Colorado or us to help Colorado. Those are the types of things that I think the more cooperative and collaborative you are from a, a national and regional perspective, that's only better. And I think we'll continue to see that as we get further into this process. So.
Andrew, I don't have any questions. Um, and I know that you mentioned on, uh, at, at the beginning of your part of the presentation, you were concerned that it might be a little too technical. I actually think it was a really, really good, um, easily understandable overview of what SPP is, how BPU connects to SPP and, and sort of the job to balance the grid across our region. So, uh, very well done by you and Maurice both.
Thank you.
Add a follow-up thing to Jeff's point. Uh, you got a question?
Who funds the SPP? I, I don't know if that's a good question.
No, great question. So as I mentioned, it is a nonprofit organization. And so all member entities effectively pay a portion of the cost of SPP. And so those costs get distributed out across its membership based on the amount of energy that's, that's kind of in the system. And so we would pay a percentage of that total cost, just like Evergy pays a percentage of that total cost. Independence does the same. And so effectively their role is to bring down the price of power for everybody because they set a, a system up instead of you only using your own resources to feed your own system is they stack up all the resources collectively and turn on the lowest cost resource every time that it's needed. And so that's their role is to lower the overall cost while providing reliability. But us as member organizations pay for that cost of SPP.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Only other part of history I want to talk about was, uh, so probably 25, 30 years ago, somewhere there about, uh, we did set up a low shedding scheme for our own system. This is when we were on our own balancing authority. SPP did not have, uh, the, uh, control over our system or was not in place like, like, like it is today. Basically what that meant was we had Nierman and Quinero generating. Okay. We had 27, 28 substations. And we set up a automated system based on frequency output for those generators. And when the, when things occurred on our system that start bringing the frequency, all changing the frequency of those generators, they start dropping load automatically. And that was an automated system we had in place. It's still in place today. But what, what has changed is now SPP is now calling us and put this generator on, take this generator off. Back in those days, we were managing our own generation every day, trying to supply our own load. And then this game was set up to protect those generators so that, you know, BP you did have the resources in place to continue to, to satisfy our own load. Uh, but things have changed quite a bit. And, uh, and my hope is we don't have to get into another rolling blackout, burnout, brownout type, uh, situation like we did a couple of years ago, uh, a couple of years ago, almost. And, uh, but I mean, things have changed. Things will continue to evolve. You know, I, I know staff has looked at that and we've done some follow-up, uh, lessons learned based on, on some of that. We can certainly bring some of that back if you want to in, in the future conversations. But what I do want to, want to do, uh, since we're in this winter period, I thought it was, it was good idea to talk about electric and what's going on there. We do operate a water utility too. And there, there are certain things that, that we have to go through. And, uh, I know you've heard a lot about main breaks and stuff like that across the region. And I do want to have Steve come back and talk about some of that in next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Maurice. Next, uh, miscellaneous comments, uh, couple, a couple of announcements. One, uh, getting back to the customers, uh, I did say that at our last board meeting that I would, I would mark a few customers' names and the issues they brought back and have staff to follow up. And, uh, and there was four, uh, customers that either had electrical issues, billing issues, uh, service issues. And, uh, Pat staff to go back and contact all of them. I think all those issues have been resolved. I think we're still trying to make contact with one customer to talk, talk to that person about how to go through and navigate on the energy engage. But to my knowledge, based on what I was told, I think all the other concerns have been addressed. And we've had that follow-up with all those, all of those customers. So just wanted to report that. Also, uh, on January 21st, 22nd, uh, we'll have our annual Eagle Days for those that, it's the 21st anniversary for those that want to attend. It's out at James P. Hall, James P. Davis Hall, out at the, uh, out at the lake. Uh, I think there's another, uh, event at Sligo Library, at least reading off of this. Piece of information that David Milhoff gave me the day. And then the other thing I wanted to report is next, tomorrow, uh, January 5th, six o'clock PM to 7:30 PM is the Wyandotte County Legislative Delegation Town Hall Meeting. May want to, may want to participate there to be at the West Library, West Wyandotte Library at, on 82nd Street. And that's at six o'clock tomorrow. And I think that's all the comments I have today. I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Anybody that would like to, any member on this board that would like to be part of that, to let me know. And then I will work, um, with the group on setting up a time and a place. And if there's enough notice that we provide notice, it could be more than three of us.
Yes, as long as it's an open media, a public meeting.
So I, I would take that on and any of you that, um, would like to contact me later today or tomorrow, let me know.
If you, you would be limited to discussions on when, because if, when you start having serial communication.
Exactly.
So it might be better to have.
That discussion now.
That discussion now or next meeting about how you wish to set it up.
Okay. That's why I particularly said that, that following week after we met again. So, um, that's really all, all the comments I wanted to make is just get the pot going. And thanks for everybody that, um, did a presentation tonight. And so, uh, Mr. Groneman.
I just want to thank Maurice and, and Andrew for the presentation. It was, it was really good. I think I want to commend the board president for, uh, setting up the self-evaluation, board self-evaluation. I think that is long overdue and it were, I think that, uh, we've got a ways to go yet, but I think that was a good first step. So.
Thank you.
That's all I, the only comments I have.
Okay, Mr. Haley.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam President, um, I too would like to thank, um, Andrew and Maurice and Lori for the presentations that you brought tonight. It's an education for me. This is my anniversary. This is my, one year ago, I, um, was allowed to be sworn in and join the board. So this is my anniversary. And one year in, I have to reiterate that what I ran on and what I'm here for is, um, I, I ran on putting the public back in the board of public utilities. That was my campaign slogan. I'd like to say in one year, I'm happy to see that there has been in my mind greater public involvement. We hear from the public through audio visual, some are tracking us, are able to participate in the meetings through Zoom. The public is, um, a little more involved in policies lately, uh, just talking about when we're going to have some more interim meetings to discuss how we can bring this utility about. So I'm happy about the, the first year. There's still so much more to do. Mr. Johnson just mentioned what I was going to mention that tomorrow night, uh, Thursday, the 5th, there is a public meeting regarding the Wyandotte County Legislative Delegation, which will start, um, back to work in Topeka on the 9th, Monday, the 9th. Want to urge everyone to participate. The overlap between, uh, state government and, um, our municipally held utility is often very slight. As you know, we're governed by, uh, we're governed by this board and by our staff and, and, and the management. The Kansas Corporation Commission is what oversees most utilities, uh, in, in the state. However, there are some points, some legislation for those who show up to support the bifurcation of bills and a cap on how much a municipality, like the unified government, uh, should be allowed to have on a utility bill by way of pass-through. We pay in Wyandotte County significantly higher than any other municipal utility in terms of UG charges. And there are issues that people in Topeka should hear about and your legislative delegation should hear about, and I urge you to be there. So thank you again. Um, I would still want to push for greater customer service in the lobby opening, but I hope everyone will have a very good, uh, new year. And I'm glad to have been here one year and do the best I can in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mylan.
I'm looking for a post with 2023. Happy New Year. I'm too.
Rose.
Thank you. Happy anniversary, David. If I come to the legislative forum tomorrow night, can I just come as like a resident and not a VP board member? Thank you. I, I want to thank, uh, the members of the public, Louise, Ryan, Ty, Lisa, Susan, who participated tonight via phone. I know that, um, there are a couple of outstanding questions that were asked during that discussion aside from, um, sort of the community engagement group. And, um, in, I know that, that Mr. Mylan, um, gave us his, his viewpoint in the work session that we should listen and refer. Well, no board member interacted with anybody on that, that called in tonight. And then I didn't hear any response from Bill or any, I guess, any of the staff as to whether any of those questions would be responded to. So I, I guess that's where I'm, I'm just asking if they will be.
I've taken notes of everybody that called. I keep notes of some of the issues that they raised. And, uh, if you're lucky to me to prepare something to bring it back next board meeting, I could certainly do that.
I guess I would. I guess that's the refer part. So it's all I got.
My turn, Bob. Yeah, yeah. I'm not used to going last, so this will be exciting. First off, I would be very interested in, uh, attending a meeting. I would, I would ask that, uh, the, the group that sets up the meeting give as much notice as possible. My, my, uh, my hours or, or availability is, is limited. So the more advanced notice that I can have on when and where, uh, the better the opportunity that I'll, I'll be able to attend. And if for no other reason to audit and, and to hear, uh, more from, from the public as far as their ideas. I think before any decisions are made, we need to fully understand everybody's viewpoints. Uh, other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy new year. And I want to wish Tom all the best with his upcoming surgery. Crystal and I will be keeping you in our purse.
I need a motion for adjournment.
This is GFI second that motion.
Roll call.
Roll call Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.